And I will get this meeting called to order. Good evening. This is the meeting of the planning board, Town of Harwich, for the 11th of January 2022. This meeting of the planning board is being held in person and may be available as a live broadcast on Channel 18. Members of the public with an interest in any portion or specific item of the agenda should be planned for in-person attendance. For the call to order, if according to Massachusetts law, anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the chair, who will then inform other attendees at the start of the meeting. Is there anybody? No, but he raises their hand. So would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we get underway with our public hearing, I just wanted to take a moment to note the passing of a member of the board. On, I guess it was January 1st, Joe, who is no longer with us, and he will have, there is going to be, if you haven't seen the funeral notice, he will, there's going to be a service, I guess, on Thursday at...
It is on Thursday, the funeral is on Friday.
Three to five.
Yeah, yeah, Thursday and funeral on Friday. So I'm sure Joe has served this board ably for many years, and he is going to be sorely missed, so. At any rate...
Just for the record, John Woodparland, and I just wanted to say that he will be missed.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
I'd also like to add that he will be missed. He was quite the character, but he, obviously, pretty close and loving to his family and also to the Town of Harwich. In my short time here, I served on the Fire Station Two Committee with him. He was a big help here, and then kind of mentored me a little bit when I first started on the planning board, so he will be missed. And I'd like to raise a toast to him. He was a proud Marine, so semper fi to Joe.
Semper fi, Joe. So thank you for that. Appreciate those sentiments, and I'm sure people in the, who are watching this meeting understand the gravity of the scenario, the magnitude of our loss. So with that said, I'd like to open a public hearing for new business on case number PB 2020 dash, excuse me, PB 2022 dash 01, Darren Tangeman, as prospective buyer and applicant, Lane Meehan, trustee, CDC Realty Trust owner, seeks approval of a mixed-use special permit and a waiver of site plan review pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Sections 325-51.m and 55, through 55.f. The property is located at 705 Main Street, assessors ID 40-y5, and in the C-V zoning district. Do we have anybody here to address?
Mr. Tangeman.
You're welcome to come up and sit at the table if you'd like. Might be easier.
Just want to note, since David is joining us remotely, any actions tonight have to be by roll call.
Roll call vote, yeah.
Good evening, planning board. My name's Darren Tangeman. I'm the prospective buyer for 705 Main Street, the property that we...
Darren, could you ask him to speak closer to the...
Sorry. My name's Darren Tangeman. I am the prospective buyer for 705 Main Street, the property which I'm requesting a mixed-use special permit and site plan review waiver this evening. As you know, you have the application in front of you, and I'm sure you had the opportunity to review the contents of it in the staff report. Just to give you a quick overview of kind of the project, the intent for the project, well, first of all, let me just, let me just express my condolences for the loss of your planning board member.
Thank you.
It's a pretty, pretty large issue of magnitude for you this evening, but let me just kind of give you a little bit of an overview of this project. The intent for this project is to, is to establish a two-bedroom apartment on the second floor of 705 Main Street. It's not unlike what you see in the other, in the property adjacent to it, Ruggies, that has a similar setup or apartment above, above the restaurant there. So what the intent is to, is to establish that there as part of this mixed-use special permit. And with minor changes to the interior of it, we intend to basically establish the second, second-floor apartment. There's going to be some changes in terms of internal structure. A mezzanine will be removed and a flooring will be placed. There's a, there's a kitchen that will need to be installed in the property itself, and a circular stairwell that will have to be removed in another floor in a bedroom. Currently, the bedrooms, the size of the bedrooms meet Board of Health limitations for, for bedroom size, and the windows meet code for, as an egress. So the, the, the structure as it is proposed would meet all Board of Health requirements and for a two-bedroom apartment on the second level. As part of this request, the, for the mixed-use permit, we have to meet several criteria. Criteria A is that this property shall have no less than 33% of the floor area of the building dedicated to commercial use. The intent for this is that 52% of the floor area for the building will remain dedicated to commercial use on the first floor that faces the street, and that the second-floor apartment will be comprised of 1,055 square feet, which is 48% of the second floor, so it will exceed that 33% significantly. The other, one of the other criteria is for each mixed-use development in Commercial Village, be a minimum of five, be a minimum of 5,000 square feet of lot area per residential unit. This will be, the lot size of this property is 5,663 square feet, so it meets that requirement. And then it also needs to, the applications for mixed-use development should also comply with all Board of Health regulations, and as I stated before, the measurements and requirements of the bedroom will all meet those, those bedroom requirements for Board of Health and as well, the, meets the septic requirements as well as you saw in the staff, staff report. The parking shall comply with requirements as it relates to off-street parking regulations for the Harwich zoning board. I will touch on this one as the site is currently pre-existing non-conforming according to, to the Harwich zoning board, noting that the current use of, as cable, as Cape Cod Tile Works, it doesn't currently conform to the Harwich parking requirements. It's important to note that this transitioning to a second-floor apartment for the retail show, from a retail showroom space to a 1,055-square-foot, single-unit, two-bedroom apartment will reduce the intensity of use from what it's, what it's currently being used for. So as a result, you know, the request is to, is to use or continue to use the existing non-conforming parking for this use, is it will be less of an impact than its, than its current use. D is that there shall be no outdoor, there shall be outdoor landscape public area provided as part of the landscaping requirement in the zoning bylaws. A landscape public area already exists to the, on, on the, at the building, on the western front corner of the building, and there's a landscaped area with a, with a bench that is there right now. And then special permit application shall comply with requirements of the site plan approval as, you know, I'm also submitted a request for waiver of the site plan review as a request for the special permit for mixed-use was not substantial, will not substantially change the relationship of the structure to the site and to abutting properties and structures from its original use. There's no intended changes to the exterior of this building. This is all for internal renovation and, and change. And then lastly, screening of parking shall comply with the provisions of 325-43. Screening of parking already complies with the provisions. The commercial building screens the north side of the parking lot, four-foot retaining wall, or screens the western side, the four-foot retaining wall continues around the, to screen the south side of the parking area with large trees and a mound above the retaining wall. The eastern side directly abuts the parking area for the restaurant, commercial use at 707 Main Street. With that being said, that is the, the case, and that is the criteria as it applies to the request for the special use, mixed-use special use permit, and I'd be open to any questions you have about this proposal.
Why don't we turn to Mr. Ideman first?
Yeah, thanks. Many of you probably know this property or even the business. The Meehans have run this property for several decades at this point and raised their children in the town, and the kids have all sprouted up and gotten bigger, and I'm not sure what their plans are at this point, but they want to sell the property. Back in the late 90s, they actually put on a partial second-floor addition to, to build out the, that second floor as well. So what the property consists of today is a retail use, Cape Cod Tile Works, and a two-story building. This is one of the Three Sisters buildings in Harwich Center, which all have that Greek Revival look and kind of mirror one another, so it's, it's an important building. I think this, not only does this use, you know, is consistent with the special permit standards, but I think it also has the benefit for forwarding our planning goals in an area like this, both for purposes of economic development, providing, and providing housing and maintaining the historic integrity and character of this particular area. One procedural matter I want to note, no new, and this is kind of a, this is kind of tales on some of our prior hearings. There was no new plan submitted with this application. The plans were provided from older applications. I think it's completely appropriate, that's up to you to determine, but of course, what you have to remember with this, and what we've talked about with other properties and projects, is there are no site changes proposed and no site changes necessitated by this. It's pretty much using the existing building, which, again, from a planning perspective, it's only the use of a building that helps maintain the viability and economic viability for buildings like this. So if we want to maintain our historic core, we'd better come up with uses that are, that are viable. And it's been the clarion call for planners for several decades now to do things that once existed prior to zoning, have things like village-type development in town centers, mixed-use development. Our modern zoning kind of started to sequester uses, both in terms of districts and terms of building. This is exactly the type of project which takes us back to the, you know, the desirable elements of the past and past land use that we're trying to encourage through planning and our, and our village center goals. In terms of the specific zoning, a mixed-use development requires a special permit. Mr. Tangeman went, and I agree with his characterization, he went through the particular elements that have to be met to get that special permit in the district. The, the only element I would kind of mention in more detail, though I totally agree with the characterization and the outcome, is parking. So there is a parking field in back of the building. The building certainly screens that parking, which is good. Even when the Meehans put on their addition, you know, there was no requirement for the zoning board or the building commission at that time to, to add additional parking. If you did a takeoff of the amount of parking that's required under our zoning bylaw for that use today, it would actually be something along the lines of nine or 10 spaces.
Right.
And they have, they're undefined spaces, but there are about five today. So making half the building residential rather than retail, I think, cuts the intensity, certainly in the use of parking, would be my recommendation, and the planning board has this authority under its special permit and site plan review to recognize, to essentially waive the number of required parking spaces, and in this case would be, would have the authority to recognize the existing parking to be sufficient to meet the needs of this particular use. I think that's especially the case where we're talking about a village center, so it's a walkable area anyway. There's street parking, which is a little unusual, but you have street parking here, and then you have municipal lots as well. I'm not sure exactly what retail use they have decided on or will land on. We've had some kind of informal discussions, but whatever type of retail use that is, is probably going to be of a character that's not a high-volume use that would necessitate a, a much larger kind of parking field. So I'm in agreement that the parking that is on-site today is sufficient to meet their needs, and again, talking about village center or historic center zoning, what you don't want to do is emphasize the parking. You want to emphasize the building and that use within your core. So I think it would probably be contrary if you, you know, for some reason you wanted them to develop more parking. It's probably contrary to a lot of village center goals and, you know, historic development goals. My ultimate recommendation here is, I have a few kind of standard conditions, nothing out of the ordinary, would be to recommend issuance of the special permit and to waive the requirement for site plan review subject to the conditions. And you heard Mr. Tangeman also go through the standard for the waiver of site plan review. And again, this goes back to the idea that there are no site plan changes or changes to the exterior of the building proposed or required. Thus, if the standard is whether you change the relationship of the structure to the neighboring properties or development, this certainly meets that because there are no site changes. You really can't change the relationship of the building and the site to neighboring development or structures if you're not changing the site or the exterior. So that's what I have for now, and I'd be happy to kind of discuss it further with you or answer any questions you have. I did put up one of the older plans that we have from the filing, just to kind of orient you. Up on the top of the screen is Main Street, and that's the, you see the existing stores, the Cape Cod Tile Works, and there's a, there's a curb cotton entrance off Main Street back to where the kind of undefined parking is. It says paved parking, it's probably, you know, it's an historic paving. It's kind of rubble at this point.
Right. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for either Mr. Ideman or the applicant?
Can I save I do?
Please, Dave, go right ahead.
John, on your page one of the planning comments, you, item 10D, you show five undefined gravel spaces located behind the building. The drawings show four, with one in front of the building, which is also not shown on the site plan. Can you explain that difference?
Yeah, I think they have enough room to get five spaces in, angled spaces.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Yeah, I do. It's, it's hard to determine how much parking is there, again, because it's undefined. It's just a, I mean, it's just a open kind of gravel or rubble type of space with parking and a, and some railroad ties to the, to the west of it. But I think today they would have enough room for five spaces to get them in, and again, there's some street parking, too.
Does that still require detailed calculations for the parking?
I'm sorry, does that require detailed calculations?
For the parking?
Yeah, I don't think you need to do detailed calculations. It's, it's in your inherent authority as part of your special permit and site plan review to kind of waive parking requirements based on the circumstances presented. I think the circumstances that are presented is the particular use and the non-conforming nature of the property.
Okay. Thank you.
And the reduction in use with the second floor. Phil, I know you had a...
I have a question. On the stairways, the circular stairway on the first floor, is that part of that on the outside? There's not a wall separating it from the outside.
Let me see the drawing.
There is an exterior stair system today.
I see that.
That was going to be the primary entrances, up a staircase, like a external flight.
I see the primary, and they're going to the office.
So you see the first floor, I don't know if you, if you want, if you can bring it to the first floor, shows that circular staircase going up into bedroom number two in there. So actually, I'm sorry, it's the...
Goes to the basement?
Yeah, that one goes to the basement that you're seeing there, that's correct.
Yeah, but if, as you look at it on the first floor plan, to the left side of the stairway, there's no wall.
Yeah, that, that, that was a, that's the way that the walls in the basement are, are the, are set up there.
It's totally inside.
It is, that's completely inside, correct. There is a one, there is, if you look at the second floor, and you know, if you've been by this building, you can see that the, one of the primary egress to the, to the second-floor bedroom will be that, bedroom unit will be the, that side stairwell.
Yes, yes.
And then there was a second stairwell that will, that would be a second egress that will go into the actual retail unit if necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Mary?
My only question was also somewhat related to the stairwell and just to point out that because it's a historic district, any changes on the outside would need to be, to go through the certificate of appropriations process through HDHC. So that was, that was all. I had a similar question where I couldn't tell whether it was, outside was changing or not, so.
Craig? Thank you. A couple of questions following up on Dave's about the parking. So we have, currently, there are no apartments in the, in the building, correct?
Correct.
So we've said, basically, we're adding two apartments and...
Two bedrooms, one apartment.
I'm sorry, one apartment. Two bedrooms, which, correct me if I'm wrong, requires, or the parking calculation is 1.5 per bedroom? So that's a total of three, correct?
It's one, it's 1.5 per unit.
Oh, per unit?
Yeah.
Not per bedroom?
No.
Okay, so 1.5, and do we think that that relatively equals the, the offset by reducing the retail space?
It does. If you do the retail use calculation for the same, I think you get four, you need about four spaces.
Okay.
Yeah.
The second question is, again, related to parking. I read something somewhere about removal of a shed, and then I wasn't sure whether the shed is being removed or not. I thought I saw later that if you want the shed removed, and maybe...
So there is, there is a shed in, in the rear of the building, and what I tried to do is use the, what I did is use the, the, I believe, the 40, the 45-degree parking plan to try to show how four parking spaces at that, that angle could be situated in the rear. There's a requirement that you have a loading, you not have a, a loading area near that garage door in the back as well, so that actually eliminates another, another parking space, and the fifth parking space would be in the front. There's almost enough room on the, on the, on the other side of the, the four parking spaces for a fifth parking space in the back, but also there's a restriction that you can't place it in front of a waste receptacle, a large waste receptacle, so that was another limitation. There's a lot of limitations from the pre, non-conforming, pre-existing use in the back that, that, that kind of necessitates this request for the waiver. And so there is, just to answer your question, there is a shed back there. I haven't determined whether or not it has, it has a specific use for the retail use at this point, but that's what it's been used for, is for storage, for the retail use. They've still been able to get, in a different configuration, four to five parking spaces in the back. I just don't, it's not an organized parking, you know, in the way that it should be placed in, you know, done in your, within your dimensions that you have for the zoning bylaws.
So the intent is that the shed will stay?
I would, I would like to see it stay, if possible, and, and use the existing...
And then the, the, the four-year counting on the angle, even though we know right now today it's undefined, are after the shed. The shed is essentially what says loading area on the map that I'm looking at?
Correct, correct. It's in the, it's a little, and it kind of, it press actually the area where, where one, one is, it's like in that area right there.
Okay. I am a little bit concerned in that it's undefined, and I understand, you know, we want to be encouraging more walking than parking, but also recognizing, I guess, I'm going to leap ahead and say I would hate to see, you know, if there's two people living in the apartment and they each have a vehicle, and would they be, end up having to take up a parking space on the street and park their vehicle there because there's no room in this back lot if there's more than, you know, two people at the retail operation? I took a ride back there yesterday, and it's pretty tight.
Yeah.
Quite frankly, there was one vehicle in the entire back lot, and I had a tough time just turning around and going back out.
So you got a chance to see the shed as well?
I got a chance to see the shed, and there's a lot of other material there that looked like, if you're going to, if the intent is to make the parking be these four angled spaces, is there something that can be done to sort of clean up the area there? I think you mentioned railroad ties and so forth, to really give you four spaces, and even if it's, you know, could we make a condition that white lines are painted on the gravel? Or, and I know in other cases we've had discussions about curbing in front of the parking spaces, berms or...
Well, a wheel, I think a wheel stop is what you're saying.
A wheel stop.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't think it's going to work here to put painted lines, but, you know, something like a wheel stop would work. I don't know if Mr. Tangeman would be willing to, you know, we can't enforce it, but would he be willing to put signs there that said, you know, for the apartment?
Tenant parking.
Or something like that.
Yeah. I'm just looking to, and I'm also thinking that, I know there was an issue, whatever it was, recently with the, we did the TIPS program or the temporary mass DOT beautification area, and there was a concern about parking by some of the retail tenants along there. And I know Lane was, was one of them, and there is a space right in front, and we're, we're sort of throwing that into saying, you know, there's, we've got four in back plus one in front. If we do a TIPS program next year and we permanently eliminate that or put curbing and flowers up, what does that do, if anything? Is it, we just, eh, that's the way it is, and, you know, we approved this, we said we approved it with the idea that there was four in back and one in front, now there's only four.
Yeah, well, I think all those things are up for discussion, but I think the primary thing to consider here is that the parking situation isn't going to be ideal, and it's not going to, there's no way to make a non-conforming property like this consistent with a, a parking schedule which is intended for new construction. So I, you know, I think even if that space were to be lost out front, you should decide on this, even assuming something like that.
Right.
Okay.
Mary, did you...
Thank you.
So just two points that I wanted to make on the parking. First, we know the parking is going to be a better situation with the mixed use than it is currently with the, with the full-on retail use, so I, I think that's something in favor of, of the application and the waiver and not having to, to worry about the parking as it currently exists. And I think, too, the other thing that we need to keep in mind is there are plenty of municipal spaces along this stretch.
Right.
There's a huge municipal lot here behind Town Hall. There are other municipal spaces along this stretch, so an applicant can use municipal spaces towards their calculations, and in this situation, I think there are, those are available. Yes, parking is tight in this section, but it's tight down that end of the street. We've got, what, 100 spaces behind this building, so within, you know, a quarter of a, of a mile, 200 yards.
Which is the planning, so when you're planning for a quarter mile is the distance you're looking at, to provide satellite kind of parking to a particular use, so it's consistent with that planning practice.
So just from my perspective, I, I don't see the parking as, as being a real issue is, as it relates to a waiver of site plan or, or the granting the mixed-use special permit seems reasonable to me in a, in a historic district that's, that's encouraging a, a walking and a streetscape anyway, so my two cents worth.
I would agree, and I would also say that I think that the parking situation in the back is going to solve itself by when people, when tenants can't get a parking spot, they're going to request for a sign saying tenant only, and that's going to solve any competition because it'll give them legal recourse to their own.
I think you've got a wooden retaining wall back there, right?
Correct.
The cars are going to face right into that.
That's correct, yeah, there's a four-foot retaining wall right there where they park, yes.
Any other issues? David, are you, are you on board here?
I'm comfortable. I'm listening to all these good comments.
Well, perhaps we ought to close the public meeting then?
So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for case number 2022-01.
Second.
A motion of second. Let's take a vote. David Harris?
Aye.
Phil Stoltz?
Phil Stoltz, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
And I would make a motion that the planning board adopt the recommended findings set forth in the staff report dated December 14th, 2021.
dated December 14th, 2021 and um adopt also the conditions of approval that are also set forth here in uh this staff report. Grant a mixed use development use special permit and a waiver of site plan review for uh Mr. Darren Tangeman at the property located at 705 Main Street Harwich Center, subject to the conditions said set forth here.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's hold our roll call vote. David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
William Stoltz?
William Stoltz, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, thanks for your consideration this evening.
Thank you.
Our pleasure. Look forward to seeing what happens.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
I did want to say this was a very complete package. I appreciated all the information.
Absolutely.
It was very well put together.
Comprehensive.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
I have to let the cat out of the bag. Mr. Tangeman is a municipal professional here in Cape Cod. He's the Truro Town Manager.
Ah, okay.
He set a good example.
Terrific.
So we're not surprised.
Yeah. We would not have accepted anything less, Ivan.
Yeah, you should you should hold me accountable if I would have done anything less, but I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
This comes to the public meeting portion of the evening, uh, where we have item PB 2021 dash 21. At 15 Bell's Neck Road, the board endorsement of approved definitive subdivision plan. Is that uh something?
Yes, I'm I'm gonna pass this out.
You're gonna sign off on this first?
The appeal period has passed.
Okay.
The Bell's Neck, remember it was the Panhandle Lot?
Yep.
Yeah.
Appeals period has passed without an appeal. Anita has signed the the plan. The clerk certifying is to that. And so now is the time to have it endorsed. I will pass along the Mylar, the two paper copies.
Okay.
And I'll also just remind you, when you approved this, it was subject to a few conditions. One of the conditions was to add some monuments to the plan.
Right.
And um to have the surveyor certify that they've added those monuments to the plan, but also that all the bounds that were to be set that hadn't been yet set uh have been set. So that's all been done already and it's all shown on this plan. And she certified that's done. So I think that completes the conditions uh as well. So I'll pass this around.
Excellent.
Is John or four of us enough?
It is, because this is subdivision.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And in fact, the um what you approved a couple of months ago.
That's what I was wondering whether we need whether you needed to exercise that or not.
Yeah, and I actually I looked back in some old Harwich plans that had been done decades ago. Um, there was a time for both A and Rs and subdivisions, just the chair sign. Yeah.
Is that the Mylar?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. I'll have I'll give that to you for a minute.
While that's going along, uh, I think we can entertain discussions. Um, first of all, the approval of minutes is not going to happen this evening because there are no minutes from the 14th. Um, and we have advisory opinions. The HDHC has two demolition delays, it looks like. One on Depot or was it Depot? Is that some in South Harwich?
Sure.
No, North Harwich. It's actually hit by a car.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was hit by a car and so I think the owner wants to
That's the one.
Complete what the car began.
Right.
I don't have any particular comments on either historic matter and um I don't think there was anything of particular note in ZVA except for I will tell you there's a variance being requested for the conversion of the former Coachman Motel in Harwichport. Uh, it's motor in. That's also coming to the planning board next um at the next meeting for site plan review. It's a preexisting nonconforming motel. They want to change it to a dormitory use.
This is the one right across from Julian?
Yes.
Yes, this is the former Coachman. Want to turn into a dormitory use for the use of Witchmere Harbor Club folks. Um, it does unfortunately it requires a variance because it's not a use expressly set out in the zoning bylaw.
Right.
Though strangely, dormitory is a defined term in the zoning bylaw and it's used in the parking schedule, but it's not used in the use schedule. So I think it was probably intended to be added to the zoning at one point and just never made it in.
Right.
But because it's not in the use schedule, needs a variance, but it seems to be a relatively good reuse of that. Uh, but you'll see it for site plan review um at your next meeting. Uh, but it's also on the agenda for the court review for variance.
Do we have any other old business?
The only thing I'll bring up, um, Duncan, is, you know, I think the Cape Cod Commission is probably ready to come back here and discuss the West Harwich Design Guidelines. So if you have anything further, I think that I think I had at some point requested that they might want to show a more commercial type building.
Right.
I'm not sure they've really done that, but I can't really make any more comments on it. I don't wanna I would rather have it just come to the board and have the board make comments than me get too deep into it at this time and make them change things. So I think it's probably a good they've kind of made overtures about coming back. So I think at this point we should probably any comments you or I have, finish it up and then just have it um
Okay.
Come back to the board.
Yeah, I it has been I've been kicking it down the road for about five weeks. I know I can I have to bear into it, so.
But you might not have you might just decide you don't have anything else to add, but then we can just let them.
Well, I think I said, look, I everything I have, I've given you. I don't want to make the choices. I think it was their document. They should.
We should probably say that directly to them because I think they were trying to be um
Because I could come up with design ideas for how to do the layout, but I don't think that's necessarily what I should be doing.
I'd rather do it in public.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd rather do it in public anyway.
Right, agree.
Yeah.
Just have them come back and then we can comment at a public hearing and
Yeah.
Okay.
And then it's open for public review and public comment and everything else.
Yeah.
Seems to make more sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, just let's uh let's keep the momentum going on that one.
Right.
I have one question if if you will indulge me. Are there any um zoning changes that that you are recommending that we kind of look at for spring town meeting or or start now for a fall town meeting?
I have innumerable zoning changes. I'm kind of, you know, the hard thing at this point is I think maybe just you and I understand how deep this LCP is gonna go.
Yeah.
And you can't do both. You can't
Agreed.
Basically do a wholesale change to your zoning bylaw.
Agreed.
Rework the e-permitting system, draft the LCP.
And do a tweaking of the language before you even get into the process.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I could and then I try to say, well, what are the priorities? There are so many priorities. The one I just mentioned to you about, I know it's maybe not a priority, but okay, dormitory is used
With the consistency.
And it's defined, but you can't do it in the town and that require and you know, it's something that may really help the town.
It solves a real problem for all of us.
But we're telling people they have to get a use variance for.
Right.
Right.
So that's just one example of, uh, so I don't know. I I guess maybe we should probably notice this discussion, um, you know, for another meeting, but I guess I would like to talk to you and I early on when I started, I talked to you, but I think I'd really like to hear from you. Should we be redoing the zoning? Or should we be setting off doing the LCP? Which has more value? It's not that one is valueless and the other isn't, but what is the bigger priority? Because the selectmen have said the LCP is the priority, but I think the planning board should be saying that. It's gonna be, I mean, it's two years of work. That's what we're gonna be, you know, doing. And even if the planning board isn't steering it until it comes back to you, you're still hopefully gonna be involved and
Right.
I mean, and and I'm gonna be busy with my, you know, regular work with the planning board. I and you know, if we do a wholesale kind of zoning change and fix all these inconsistencies, I think it's only right to bring in the um charter and bylaw review committee. So that's gonna be a whole process.
Technically required.
Right.
Orchestrating that and doing those logistics and it just it it, you know, you you can't do it all at the same time. We're not a town with an assistant planner.
What's the estimated timeline for doing the RFP and all of that? I mean, like, logistically speaking, getting the long-range planning thing off the ground is is that a six-month process?
Well, I think the whole process is a couple of years.
No, no, but I mean, to get it off the ground. So do we have time to at least have a discussion about staging priority conversation if there's something that can be done in six or eight months?
Yes, yes.
You know?
We do.
And we could just cherry pick what are the like the big bombs that you see? Because you mentioned right up front, you know, that you saw problems. Maybe these are things that we could kind of take care of very quickly, have our our meetings and our hearings and then get this into a town, you know, what are we looking at? May? What is it? What's the May?
May, so it's spring town meeting and then
May 7th or 9th or something like?
Potentially a fall if they decide to have one.
Yeah.
But that's always dependent on the selectmen and their and their decision.
How big the warrant is.
And we're still in COVID, so we're still, you know, facing the
It might be just a good use of our time just to go through and see what your checklist of important top-of-mind issues might be so that we don't waste the time that's the interim time. I mean,
Yeah.
Assuming that we're not asking to do more than what you've already seen, the red flags you've already noted.
It's every it's every, I mean, I'll be honest, it's every page.
Yeah.
And it's it's not even a matter of I want to come into town uh as the town planner and make um kind of major philosophical changes in the way. It's just inconsistent language.
Right, right.
And it's a product of having been amended multiple times by multiple people and different hands and
Ad hocism.
It's it's how it's what happens when when you're making changes. And unfortunately, our process in a town, uh, anything that we change has to get approved by the Attorney General's Office. So you try to only make the changes that you have to.
Right.
Because you don't want to open the whole thing up to up to, you know, Attorney General review, so.
Or the town meeting who can.
Exactly, exactly. So it, you know, it it it's a snowball effect.
Well, let's take what we dealt with tonight. I mean, you granted the waiver of site plan review. I think it met the standard, but merely because you have a new use on site, should that require a site plan review? Or should the triggers of site plan review be somehow you're changing the physical layout of the site? Right? Because I think that's how it used to. Bill has enough experience with this board. I think that's the way it used to be and then it was changed. There used to be, I think, a much more logical process for site plan review where there was major site plan review and minor site plan review and the triggers were basically about the changes in the site rather than the use. And I don't know why. I know it changed in the early 2000s, mid 2000s, but I'm not sure it's better than what it was in the past.
And I'll say from my experience as a municipal attorney off Cape, in cities, site plan review is done by your professionals. It's your police chief, your fire chief, your planner and your building inspector and, you know, your DPW commissioner. And the board stays out of it. We grant the permits, but but the site plan review certainly isn't a isn't a permanent portion. It it goes through those those um town professionals.
Well, even with the one we just did, the interior of that will be done by the building inspector.
Exactly.
Plumbing inspector, wire inspector, gas.
Exactly, exactly. And and I I would agree like that. I think part of that issue is what prompted the temporary waiver that we had with the the old Friendly's building, you know, it nothing was changing on the site. The site was the same. Nothing was changing. So to hold it up for and keep it vacant for another summer, I know from my perspective didn't make sense. And we just didn't have, you know, a kind of agreement on whether it was could be could be permanent, so.
Plus, the cost involved was onerous in that particular situation, you know.
I I apologize. I did not. My intention was not to open a can of worms. It was it was simply to to see where if if any thought had been focused forward.
Yeah, I don't want to kick the can down the road, but but remember the the uh the amendment that was ready to go to town meeting. It was the it was the MRL parking and we're just gonna change one dimension here. But then you identify it's just gonna create another problem because you should never have that parking setback related to the district. It should be related to the use, especially where you had certain setbacks for residential districts, but the parking schedule doesn't apply to single or two-family uses, which are pretty much the only thing you can do in the residential district. So it made no sense. Like, we can change things, but if you're just gonna be creating another problem, then looking at the fundamental it's sometimes it requires you to focus in on the fundamental problem. And there's just so much of that to be done because you've just have accretion after accretion after accretion, making up the zoning bylaw. So I'd love to that's my strength and my background. I'd love to focus on that, but it's just, you know, I've heard the priority is the LCP. So that's what I'm going to do unless I hear differently. And if there's a stopgap measure we need to do with zoning, that's fine. But my real plans for the zoning is at some point, we're gonna have to look at it uh the at it at its center.
Yeah.
And kind of do a a wholesale change, not in terms of the philosophy, but in terms of the drafting.
I'd I'd like to see the board look into the site coverage in the zoning laws too.
Site coverage is another interesting. I don't know exactly what um interests you about that, but I don't think site coverage works as defined currently under the zoning because what it includes is a driveway of any surface. So under site coverage, we have to include clamshell driveways, which actually, from a stormwater perspective, are considered a best management practice, but they have the same treatment as impervious, you know, bituminous cover. Even stranger, you can use shells as a mulch on your beds, but when you use it on your driveway, it
That's against you.
It becomes uh site coverage.
And that's just a recent change. That that's hasn't been changed that long. Same with with the walkways going to the house. That's part of site coverage. It shouldn't be. It's part of landscaping.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
If it's a patio, it's actually landscaping. It's it's not site coverage.
Yeah, there's just a
If there's a roof over it, it should be site coverage.
Yeah.
If it doesn't have a roof over it, it shouldn't be.
That changes it, yeah. It becomes then it becomes a porch.
Right. And I I get bituminous um asphalt being
Even that, even it, I mean, you gotta have a driveway and it shouldn't be counted as site coverage.
I I could see you doing it if it was um to encourage one versus discourage another for for different reasons. You could you could have a a philosophy built into your into your
That's exactly why you don't want to count shell driveways.
Exactly.
Because you're trying to encourage someone to use a different
Exactly.
Cover, yeah. So it defeats that
Exactly.
Purpose entirely.
Now it's all driveways, all patios, all walkways. Uh, swimming pools are now site coverage.
Yeah, yeah.
Where before they were landscaping.
Yeah.
Landscape walls up to a certain height toward landscape walls and after 36 inches, it was a structure.
Yeah.
Same with fences. Anything over six feet becomes a structure.
Well, that's a good example because I think we tried to come up with a saving provision a few years ago prior to my time being here as a plant where we had a specific, we came up and it was just like five years ago. We got a setback for septic walls. It actually made the situation worse because at one point
I questioned that septic when we did it.
Yes.
And I was concerned about it. And we had we had that conversation and it was, are we gonna put people in a worse situation?
Yes.
By doing it? And at the time, the advice was no.
Because the argument is you could have had it half the required or nonconforming setback. Now there's a hard and fast 10-foot setback and in fact, the setback under health is 10 feet.
Right.
So how do you have both your system? Now you have a greater setback potentially for septic septic components. So sometimes my point is even in very recent times, sometimes you change things in the zoning bylaw to try to help things and then you make it worse because you're not looking at it holistically through your zoning.
It causes a greater problem elsewhere.
The same thing with the um, what do you want to call them? Um, the duplex houses we talked about.
Yeah.
We make them join them together now.
Right.
Which is why do we do that?
For silly for silly little roof.
Yeah. I mean, it's still sitting on a one-acre lot. There's still two buildings.
Exactly.
And each building's on a half-acre lot. It's
But that was a 1970s.
That no, that change was made
But but that was something that that I've seen in in communities dating back to the early 70s.
Not here.
It's how they got it. It was how you got around the the um the the two-family, right?
Yeah, I don't know why I don't know why it was done. I have no idea.
Yeah, I think what you're saying, Bill, is um on a 40,000 square foot lot by special permit, you can put a two-family and they're just they can be joined with any roof, but you can't have two detached single-family houses on the same lot.
Right. Whereas two detached single-family houses on the same lot may maybe more attractive than the
Yeah, by more attractive.
Than the silly roof.
Yeah.
For example, um, in my hometown, we actually got around that. Uh, it was Pafford Development came in and they actually built standalone condos. So they look like single-family homes. Uh, they're not houses. They're homes because they're condos on smaller house lots that aren't full house lots and that's how they on smaller house lots that aren't full house lots. And that's how they, that was how they, they got around that change in the.
Davenport Realty.
I'd say late, late 80s.
Davenport Realty's been doing that since the 60s.
Yeah, same, right, the same common, the same common rule.
They had sep, no, they had separate buildings on little smaller lots. Looked like a nice subdivision.
Yep.
I know, because I framed a whole ton of those things.
I bet, yeah.
Yep.
So suffice it to say, there's a, a lot to deal with. It just hasn't been dealt with. And just like any time that you put things off, it just means that you're gonna have more to deal with at the end. And this point, to really do justice to the changes that have to be made to the zoning bylaw, requires not just a few tweaks here and there, but kind of a wholesale. And I don't want to, you know, I try not to be presumptuous, and I try not to cram things down. It's a process that I want to have out in the public with everybody who needs to be involved, not just me in a room drafting things and say, here, this is how it should be.
In your opinion, is it something that you would more shoot for a year-long process?
Yeah, absolutely. Which is why it's so problematic with the.
And I, and I'm just asking the question to, to get it out there, so that, you know, we, we kind of have the right sense of it, right? So too much to be done to have, to do it haphazard and do it shorthand, short-tripped it.
Instead of making a.
Particularly when you've got the, the, the LCP in, in process.
I would like to start with the bylaw charter review committee, run those ideas through them, then come to the planning board. The other benefit that has is when you go to town meeting, there are a lot of people who are wary when you take your entire zoning bylaw and say, cross all this out, and then substitute the entire thing with this. Because you can't go over each and every change at that point. So to build that level of trust, that you're doing what will benefit the community, you have to start maybe with a, like, a bylaw review committee, rather than just do the planning board hearings and go right to town meeting.
And that's, that's, you know, a scary prospect when you're going to, at my level, thinking about the Attorney General's review, because, because then every, every part of it is, is subject for.
Subject to, right, scrutiny.
But if it also needs to be done that way, it needs to be done that way, to make it, make sure that it's done right. So it totally makes sense.
Yeah.
So these discrepancies have been discovered or come to light through cases that have come through us or applications or whatever that comes to you that we may not even see, but have been highlighted that way or, or as I said, come to light. But is there, is there any repository anywhere of all that stuff that's happened forever, how long, things that have come to us and say, oh, this, this should be a zoning change? Things that you're talking about, this should be, is there anything somewhere, a document that's outlining that or keeping track of it? And I guess then the second part, if there isn't, or is this first part of it, and I'm thinking, this is like going through all of the zoning bylaws, and if you have to compare sections to sections or whatever, is that something that could be done by a person like an intern with a little bit of direction? Or do you have to be, not to, not to determine what changes need to be made, just to say, well, look, I found on section four, page 12, it says you can't have a parking lot, a parking space over 18 feet. And section five, zone, section four says you can. Tick, there's one thing that's gotta be addressed. Just so at least there's something when the time comes.
A 30-year professional is, is, is gonna have a, a hard time going through and pulling out all the inconsistencies.
Really?
Never mind inter, yes, because you look, because every time you look at an application, you're, you're reviewing the law.
Comes to light.
Something else comes out. So, I mean.
But some of the discrepancies are things like, it's not even just an indefinite reference to something that no longer exists in the bylaw anymore. It could be something like, you have the express authority to waive the number of spaces, but not to, say for instance, reduce the setback requirement to parking. I don't think that's by design. It's just the way it's drafted. So somebody who's reading through it isn't going to identify that. It has to be identified in practice. And I have, I have marked up my zoning bylaw.
Okay.
But I've been here, you know, for, what, seven months or something like that. There isn't a repository for everybody saying, well, we should change this. We should change that. But then again, I have a different background than other people. This is of, I, this is my background, zoning pretty much, and zoning practice. So I understand how important it is. And I also work pretty closely with the building department in reviewing applications for zoning consistency. And sometimes, you know, it, it, it bothers me that you can, you know, there's an intent to allow steps or stoops to get up to a building. And they can, they have special setback considerations. But there's no express authority to put a cover over it. So you're gonna stand out in the rain. Why? It, it wasn't by design. It just wasn't thinking when they drafted it. Some of this stuff has been in the zoning bylaw for 50 years. And it's just, we don't have the same level of scrutiny. We didn't have the same level of scrutiny then for zoning that we do now. That probably the building commissioner just decided, like with site coverage bill, that actually has been in the zoning bylaw forever. But I think just the, the, the building commissioner just used the rule of reason. That I'm gonna do what's practical.
Site coverage has been there forever, but not to the extent that it is today.
Well, it's been defi, well, my point is, it's been defined the same way, but it has, in practice, been applied a different way.
In application, it's been.
Because it's much, everything is much more scrutinized today. Rather than just in the old days, the building commissioner would say, I don't care what it says, that makes no sense.
Right. I think a lot of it comes out when a neighbor is disgruntled about somebody doing something else.
That's it, too. So maybe everybody's expectations, the, rather than having your rule of reason, which is laudable, have the same expectations for everybody when they read that zoning. The neighbors, the building commissioner, the boards.
Can always ask some of the, the lawyers that come in before us all the time, hey, what do you think, you know, do you have any comment on changes of the zoning?
And I bet they'll, they'll be split 50-50 on what they're like, what they're doing.
They'll all have an opinion.
Yeah, they will.
But there's something, a stat for you, instead of you going through everything.
Yeah. Well, I hear it from them, too.
Sure you do.
Well, I would think that the idea of having internal consistency and a kind of a uniform point of view that reflects the town, those are, if those are missing elements, we are handicapping not only ourselves as a board, but everybody who's trying to do something with their property. So, you know, it's a, it's a double whammy.
Especially today.
Yeah. And it's not an inexpensive one, so.
And it doesn't mean that we can't be protective where we need to be protective. This isn't, you know, just a, an end runaround, opening the bylaw so anybody can do whatever they want.
Right.
But it's a matter of the way it's drafted, not the substance necessarily.
Common sense.
Yeah.
A lot of it has to be.
Well, that was a much longer discussion than I intended. I apologize.
Not to worry.
But if you have anything that really bothers you, sure, we can have, you know, have a hearing and, you know, it, it, some of the federal laws have changed about flood plans again. So we might have to put that on Springtown meeting. Elaine's been.
Because we had done that, we did that two years ago.
Yeah.
Right? Because I know that was in place and was part of the, was a big part of our bond rating going up to AAA, because we had, we had dealt with that hazard mitigation.
Yeah, and it bears directly on the flood insurance.
Yeah.
But it's changed, the laws have changed again. Sometimes in minor ways, that the building commissioner has to be defined as the, there's some term of art used, like the, the chief floodplain.
Gotcha.
You know, whatever it is. And that, they require that to be in your zoning bylaw expressly. So it may just, we may have those changes anyway. Elaine's been working.
What prompted my question was, was really the, the dormitory comment. Does it, does it make sense to, to add it to a used table and add a definition, so that it, it takes it out of, give it as a matter of right or give it as a, as a special permit versus making it be a, a variance or a.
Maybe I can take a deep breath and just keep my eye on the, because it, it's like looking at a, a dike, and I have finger in one hole, and then I look around and I get overwhelmed.
There are 12 others. I understand.
Maybe I just shouldn't look around.
No, I understand. That's what prompted the question.
They're gonna add on to that?
What's that?
Make that a dormitory?
Well, they want to reuse the Coachman as a dormitory, just the building as is.
I mean, I don't even know why they need the permit for it personally.
Exactly. That's the zoning by, that's the zoning bylaw we have.
Right.
Crazy.
Yeah. Not only.
It's a paid, paid-for dormitory right now.
Right, exactly.
Not only does it require a zoning permit, it requires a use variance, the most difficult of all permits to acquire.
And it's a completely different situation from the Stone Horse, which was a rental.
That's a brand-new.
New buildings and.
Two-and-a-half-story dormitory.
And knew everything. You know, that's, the, the reuse of the motels is exactly what was set forth in our Housing Production Plan in 2016. It's part of it, is to find a way to reuse these motels as, as housing. Now, not, certainly in dormitory use, isn't gonna rise to capital A or, I don't even know that it rises to lowercase A, but, but it's still housing and, and it was a tenant in it, so.
Well, if they did, if they put kitchens in each unit, then they could get a special permit for it. That's even stranger.
Right. So, oh, go figure.
Yeah. So that's, yeah, that's the long conversation. But I think it's important to discuss this stuff sometimes. And it was appropriate to discuss because you couldn't anticipate that 48 hours prior to me.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
All right, so are we.
Ready to adjourn?
Prepared to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Well, I guess.
So is it his roll call?
Yeah, David?
Oh, yeah.
Aye.
Bill?
Bill, aye.
Mary?
Mary Maslowski, aye.
Craig?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan, aye. Thank you, folks.
Yeah, thank you.